Good evening, everyone. Let's call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. And this is the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, October 24th. It's also the City of Rialto Acting as a Successor Agency, the Redevelopment Agency, the Rialto Utility Authority, and the Rialto Housing Authority. Madam City Clerk, if you'd be so kind to do a roll call, please.
Mayor Robinson?
I'm present.
Mayor Prokhorov, Carrie Saldes.
Present.
Councilmember Raphael Treheal.
Present.
Councilmember Ed Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Joe Baca.
Present.
City Attorney Eric Bell.
Present.
Interim City Manager Henry Garcia. And Madam Mayor and Council, let the record reflect that City Treasurer would be absent.
Okay. All right. Well, now I would ask if those in attendance would be so kind to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing while Pastor Javier Reyes for Calvary Chapel will lead us in invocation. Okay? Please, repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where we stand, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and bow our heads, close our eyes. Father, we want to thank you this evening for allowing us this moment in time to come together. And I do pray for every official that's here this evening that they will not lose sight whether they've been elected or appointed or given the responsibility to make decisions, Lord, for the City of Rialto. Lord, as we're identified that it's beginning its second century of progress, that they will not lose sight of the families that they have the privilege to oversee and again make decisions on. Lord, as they recognize individuals, whether it be across guard at Land Elementary School or whether it's the girls' camp, fire girls' camp, or whether it be Police Memorial, Lord, that they would always, Lord, realize that decisions that they make affects not just one individual but a multitude within this community of Rialto. And so as they discuss not only finances and land decisions and, Lord, decisions that involve many and few, Lord, that they would not lose sight to look for your wisdom and divine guidance, your God, in all that they do. And so again, I lift up this meeting to you and I pray that you would be with us here and you would be the one that would lead us and guide every decision that would be made this night. And we ask and pray these things in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. And we all said? Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciate it. And now at this time, I would ask our City Attorney if he would be so kind as to report out on closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. There are three items on the City Council's closed session this evening. First was public employee appointment having to do with potential future City Manager. Council had a briefing from staff. There was no other reportable action. We had a conference with legal counsel with regard to two matters of existing litigation. Heard from City Attorney's Office and your Claims Adjuster on those items gave direction, but there was no other reportable action. And finally, you had a conference with your labor negotiators. You did have a briefing and gave direction, but there was no other reportable action. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. We now will move into presentations and proclamations. And the first presentation and proclamation, we are going to defer that and Mrs. Woods will be here at our first council meeting in November, which is the second Tuesday of November. So I spoke with the principal and she will make her aware of that. So we'll move right to our second presentation, and that is going to be presented by Chief Parks as well as along with...
Captain.
Captain. Yes, Captain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Tonight, we wanted to take a moment and acknowledge and celebrate the commendable achievement of a group of over thirty young local women who successfully completed our first ever Girls' Firefighter Camp this past weekend. These young women are not just our future firefighters. They are the torchbearers of courage, resilience, and the strong spirit of our community. We have some pictures of the camp here for you, Gabe. I also wanted to extend heartfelt appreciation to all the inspiring women of our local fire service agencies who took time out of their weekend to help instruct the event. Their unwavering commitment, dedication, and passion are paving the way for the next generation. In today's environment, I'm sure Chief Kling and our brothers and sisters in blue could attest, it is more challenging than ever to fill our staffing needs. In today's fire service, only five percent of career firefighters in the U.S. are female. And events like this Girls' Firefighter Camp are more than just training programs. They're essential milestones in promoting diversity in the fire service. Events like these represent our commitment to ensuring that the faces of our organization reflect the rich tapestry of this community. Our goal is clear, to be proactive in nurturing local talent from within our community. We want to ensure that our fire department is not just representative in numbers but also in sync with the spirit, values, and goals of this community. We have a short video for you of the event this weekend.
Yeah, so first, I'd like to express my gratitude to City Council. Your leadership, your support, and inspiration have been the cornerstone of initiatives like this. You've not only supported events, you've supported the dreams, ambitions, and a vision for a brighter, inclusive future. I'd also like to take a second to make a special mention of thanks to Fire Captain Teresa Rivera, who is here with me tonight, who not only served as a role model while teaching an event, but she also led the planning and coordination of it. Captain Rivera, your journey is a testament to the power of perseverance and leadership. We're extremely proud of your achievements and particularly your efforts to lead this event. Just want to say great job to you. And Teresa, if you'd like to say a few words. And then we have one of our camp members here who'd also like to speak as well.
So yeah, this weekend was an awesome weekend. We had about thirty campers ages fourteen to twenty-one. We collaborated with San Manuel Fire Department and utilized their training facilities. In the process, these girls got to experience, as you saw, aerial ladder climb along with Councilmember Treheal. He actually got on the ladder himself, and I have video of him climbing ladder. They got to do ventilation, like you guys saw. They also had to do rappelling and a bunch of other job-related tasks, but each girl had a great time. And I think it's important, each girl got put in an uncomfortable position, and through that, there was a lot of growth and accomplishment. We had several girls who actually got teary-eyed, they went through the event, were happy, and kept going and kept going. So they, it was a great time and I can't wait till future years.
Oh, definitely.
May I just say, we also have somebody might recognize one of the campers, Jocelyn Baca, when it comes up and say she worked by your experience with the event.
Good evening, City Rialto. My name is Jocelyn Baca, and I'm here representing the Women's Empowered Firefighter Camp. This camp impacted me in many ways. One of these ways was that women can do anything they put their minds to. Since there is a low amount of women wanting to become firefighters, it encourages us to know that we are also capable of doing this type of work. Another way it impacted me was it made me realize that I actually want to pursue and become a firefighter. I wasn't so serious about wanting to become a firefighter, but after experiencing it firsthand, I had realized it was an enjoyable job and would like to become one. It also builds up your confidence in wanting to try new things. To all those young females out there, I encourage all girls to attend this camp even if you don't know what you want to be when you grow up. Who knows, maybe you'll actually want to become a firefighter after this experience. I want to thank all the volunteers who took their time to help us have this experience of a lifetime. I want to personally thank Erin, Courtney, and Teresa and everyone who put this camp together. Thank you.
That was a wonderful presentation. And as I said to our captain, our chief, I know that we were having it. I did not get the date, but I'm going to take an executive privilege. And Jocelyn, Jocelyn, who happens to be Jocelyn Baca, would you come back up? I want to give you something.
The one that I've seen drawing around us all the time. I want to give you something I just bought today. And it had no idea it was going to be you. So I'm going to give you this. I bought it at Kaiser Hospital today. And it says, little girl on a bicycle, and it said, she believed she could, so she did. And I might give you that. Memory of this, it's been an honor to watch you grow up from being a toddler to, I don't even recognize her. Thank you, thank you.
Good job, Jocelyn.
Oh, you're supposed to get one of these too. But I want you to know, you can't go to the bar just yet, but they'll tell you about how you can use it. Okay. Thank you. Oh, my God.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm surprised.
And thank you, City Council.
Been in basketball, Henry? Yes.
I'd just like to make some comments. I appreciate, Brian, what the firefighters did in conjunction with San Manuel and many of the other firefighters that participated. And by the way, Jocelyn is my granddaughter and is the daughter to Supervisor Joe Baca Jr., so we really appreciate the leadership that she's taken, the growth that she's developed. She's fourteen, freshman at Rancho Cucamonga High and on the basketball team, so. And I want to thank Captain Rivera for taking the lead and putting it together. And I think it's an excellent program that we should probably be more involved...
I'm sure we'll...
...next year.
Put it together again.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You were on the ladder, so...
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I showed up to kind of show my support and was really impressed. You saw in the video some of the exercises they were doing and some of the workshops that they were doing all around, so. It's very impressive. It's great that we're contributing to the future of the industry where we're trying to diversify the firefighter kind of career in our area. So I'm hoping we can continue, maybe start thinking bigger and do more to kind of attract more women into the firefighter business. Thank you.
Mayor Prokhorov?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations, Jocelyn. Thanks for coming here. And if I would have known it was going to be that fun, I would have probably joined. I saw a small clip of Raphael getting up on that ladder and I was just like, wow, that's something I could have joined. So I'm glad you enjoyed it. I have three daughters that I'm going to run that by them, see which one's brave enough to take you guys on next year. Thank you guys for being here.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Chief. All right. Great. Now, I believe there is another presentation that's going to be presented by Councilmember Scott and Councilmember Treheal. Thank you.
As the council knows, we just did our major grand opening of the New Mark Merrill Shopping Center on South Riverside Avenue, which has some great retail center, Sprouts, Curlington, Hulka, I don't know what it's called again, Car Wash, it's a Cold Stone, a...
In-N-Out Burger.
In-N-Out, your favorite coffee place, Councilmember Baca. And New Mark Merrill presented or asked the council for their preferred charities or events that they could contribute to. Myself and Councilmember Treheal chose to donate or...
Asked that the money be donated, should have known it was off. Asked that the money be donated to the Rialto Police Memorial Fund. As everybody knows, we're building a new police station. And as part of that police station, there will be a section on the corner of Willow and Riverside Avenue that will be a memorial to our fallen officers, those who have served our community and have given their lives for our community. Additionally, there'll be a K-9 also will be interned at that location that also passed away during its duty to our city. So it's with great honor tonight that we present our checks to the Chief of Police, Mark Kling. And each one of us, I'll let Raphael talk, but each one of us was given $2,500. It'll be a total of $5,000 between Councilmember Treheal and myself that goes to the Police Memorial. We think it's a well-deserved function for the city and something that we should all be very proud of. So anybody in the community that wants to donate money, I would suggest you contact Chief Kling or his staff and certainly write a check towards it. Councilmember Treheal?
Yeah, I join Councilmember Scott as well as all of you in supporting our police department. I remember I was kind of out there in the lawn when we had the last tragedy from the police department. It was a big loss to our community, and it's something that's definitely, we need to find a place to memorialize those that are out there protecting us. So again, thank you for the opportunity to, to New Mark Merrill for providing this to us, and we're going to support the memorial for the police department.
Chief Kling?
Thank you.
It's an honor to present you this check.
My honor, sir.
Do you...
Thank you, sir.
And we'll even give you a photo op.
So...
That'd be awesome. We...
I think, yeah, turn it, if you, first we'll turn it this way so that the camera, oh, the cameras, I guess, can see it that way. I'm sorry. Turn it that way. That, I think that's the camera for the residents. We're just watching the video, I'm sorry. There you go.
Again, we want to thank New Mark Merrill for participating in our community. I know that Councilmembers Baca and Councilmember Carrasales donated their money to Frisbee ASB and Councilmember Carrasales Carter ASB, which are both great programs too. And I'm not sure what you did with yours, Mayor. Maybe you'll tell us.
You were there when you saw that I presented mine, and I'll be giving a presentation at our council meeting in November to, I donated our money to the Young Marines of San Bernardino Valley.
Excellent cause.
I hope so, because they do turn out and support us on every activity we can imagine.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could just make a couple of comments. First of all, New Mark Merrill, I appreciate that. But also, Councilmember Ed Scott and Councilmember Treheal, I'm actually for once lost for words, to be able to say, I appreciate the gesture. As council knows, and so does the community, we've lost three officers in the line of duty here that were killed. You know, we'll say that they were murdered in the line of duty. And the current police station, which is so old, has three memorial plaques in its lobby, but it just doesn't impact the community because people just don't see it unless they're in our lobby for some type of business. And usually, people that come into our station, it's not because they're celebrating, they're there because there's issues. And we seem to lose the impact of what these three individuals have done for this community. So we hope that we never have to add another plaque to the memorial that's going to be built, but memorials are expensive. And the Rialto Police Benefit Association has been raising money for years. They actually have part of the memorial, but they need additional pieces. And working with the Swinburne Group, we have a pretty decent design so far, which the committee has looked at. And this is just going to go help us offset the cost of that. So again, council members, thank you so much. Council, thank you so much for the support, and this will go to a great cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. And now, you should put that down and return it, okay? Put your sign. And now, the next presentation will be our customer service, presented by Police Chief Kling, and it's Spider.
Yeah, Spider. So I'm going to get Lieutenant Nelson up here with me. So, you know, council, you said last couple of meetings about customer service, and you know, I want you to know from the police department, we heard you. We heard you loud and clear. But we had also been working on a customer service aspect of our overall operations. And I think you'll be really happy with what you voted or actually approved for us several months ago with the Spider technologies that are going to be implemented here very, very soon. It's not something in development. We are ready to actually push the trigger, so to speak. And Lieutenant Nelson, who has streamlined this entire process, including the staff reports, I'm really excited for not only the community, the entire city, but you to see exactly what your vision has been for this police department, and this is just a continuation. So without further, let me introduce, or let Lieutenant Nelson introduce Spider to you and the community.
Okay. Great.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I promise that's how they spell Spider, that's not a typo, so don't get on me for that.
I won't send it back.
So really excited to present this software to you. I really believe it's going to enhance the overall experience our citizens will have when dealing with our police department. The software's made up of four different modules, and I'll start with the patrol module. And this is kind of where everything begins, when a call is entered into our computer automated dispatch center. When that happens, it triggers a message that'll go to our reporting parties and the victims. This message is sent via text. It gives them the reference number to their call. It also gives them a link to change the messages into an alternate language if need be, and it provides them a link into some web-based messages that have more resources. So here's kind of the workflow of the product. When a call is received, we'll send a message. Obviously, we don't want to send this message very often, but if we're delayed for some reason because of a high volume of calls or high priority calls, they will get a message saying we're delayed. When the call is closed, they'll get a message, and then after that, they'll get a message asking them to participate in a survey where they can rate the service that we provided them. So here's an example of the first message that they'll get. This is the message right after the initial call. It has the date and time. It has our phone number in case they need to call back with some more information. It has a link direct to the Bureau of Victim Services, and this is important because if they are a victim of a crime, this immediately gets them to the resources that they may need to help them get through the incident that they're involved in. It also has links to our Facebook, our website, our Twitter, and our Instagram. Here's an example of the message in Spanish with all the same information as you saw before, with all the same resources available in the same type of message. Here's a message that we are delayed. It explains to the, to the reporting party or the victim that we are delayed because of high volume of calls or a higher priority call. It does let them know, hey, we haven't forgot about you, and we'll be responding as soon as we can. And here's an example of the closeout message. So if that call is closed out initially with an arrest being made on that date, they'll get the message saying an arrest was made and that we appreciate them helping keep our community safe. The next module is the investigations module, and here's where I think we're really going to make big strides in our customer service. Just to give you a little bit of background right now, right now, our patrol officers will go out there, they'll take a report, they'll send it through our report management system. It'll get filtered through to a detective and assigned to a detective. That detective is responsible for multiple cases, though, so they can't, sometimes they can't immediately respond to the victim of the crime and give them immediate updates. Well, with this system, once that report goes through that report management system, that victim is going to immediately start getting investigation update messages. And I think that's where you're going to see us really enhance the communication with our victims. They're going to get the report number immediately, they're going to get a case status, so in this, in this case, in this message, it says active. They're going to get the detective's name, the detective's email address, and the detective's phone number. So now, instead of calling dispatch and asking, hey, where's my case at? Who's the detective? How do I get ahold of them? This message is going to immediately give them all of that information. It's also going to give them a link to request the report, so if they need the report, they have that direct link there, and it's a direct link to our records department. So if they have any questions regarding the reporting, that information is all in that message. The next module is the portal module, and this module's specific to victims only. It basically is a database for victims only they can log into through an authentication process. They'll have immediate resources available to them there, and they'll have access to all the reports of the incident that they were involved in to really help them streamline getting them the information they'll need. And the last one is the insights module. Here's where we're going to gather and analyze all the feedback we get. We're going to constantly be raising that bar. We need to raise that bar of customer service, and the feedback we get from our citizens about the service we're giving them is where we're going to make those adjustments. It's going to allow us to identify issues early, so if a supervisor sees some comments and sees a pattern of behavior that needs to be redirected, we're going to be able to do that earlier now. But it also reinforces and commends positive interactions where the officers will really see the types of, the types of impacts they're having on our citizens when they're out there treating them correctly. Here's a message that asks them to engage in a survey. If they accept that survey, the survey has six questions. I won't read them all verbatim to you, but it basically starts with their interaction with our dispatcher, their interaction with our police officers or LET or whoever it may be, interactions with detectives. It allows them a free text box to leave some comments, as you can see there, to really get into detail about how they felt about the service we offered them. It provides a rating number out of five, so it kind of gives us some motivation to keep those numbers as close to five as possible. And then it allows for some data, and our supervisors will be able to analyze this data. They'll see all the types of crimes that we're responding to, the dispositions of those crimes, the types of messages we're receiving back, and they'll be able to deploy resources in a better way and make a bigger impact. I mean, overall, we understand the emphasis this council has put on customer service. Chief Kling continues to challenge us to find ways to make it better, and we really think this is going to not only enhance our transparency but enhance communication. And I think that's a word we forget sometimes. We always talk about transparency, and it's one thing for everybody to see what we're doing, but are we communicating what we're doing? Are they truly understanding what we're doing and why we're doing it? And I think this is going to be a part of us getting better at that.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have questions? Do you have Councilmember Treheal?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the touch back that this is good customer service. But my, my question is, you know, let's say, you know, you have a victim of crime that wants to apply for a UVA based on that crime. Is there a way to notify someone there that they need kind of assistance with that?
So that information will be, will be on the website, and it's also in the pamphlets that we usually pass out to the victims of the crimes.
And then, is it in Spanish as well?
Correct.
So all this can, okay.
get into detail about how they felt about the service we offered them. It provides a rating number out of five, so it kind of gives us some motivation to keep those numbers as close to five as possible. And then it allows for some data, and our supervisors will be able to analyze this data. They'll see all the types of crimes that we're responding to, the dispositions of those crimes, the types of messages we're receiving back, and they'll be able to deploy resources in a better way and make a bigger impact. I mean, overall, we understand the emphasis this council has put on customer service. Chief Kling continues to challenge us to find ways to make it better, and we really think this is going to not only enhance our transparency, but enhance communication. And I think that's a word we forget sometimes. We always talk about transparency, and it's one thing for everybody to see what we're doing, but are we communicating what we're doing? Are they truly understanding what we're doing and why we're doing it? And I think this is going to be a part of us getting better at that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have questions? Do you have Councilmember Trejo?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the touchback that, this is good customer service. But my question is, you know, let's say, you know, you have a victim of crime that wants to apply for a U-Visa based on that crime. Is there a way to notify someone there that they need kind of assistance with that?
So that information will be on the website, and it's also in the pamphlets that we usually pass out to the victims of the crimes.
And then, is it in Spanish as well?
Correct.
So all this can, okay.
Yes, so every message, everything sent out, there's a link that says, if you need it in Spanish, they can find it in Spanish.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I have, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Scott.
Thank you. Just a quick comment. I think this is a great program for you guys to roll out, and I really commend you and the chief and staff for rolling out this project. I think it'll be great assistance to the community, because the one thing that I hear repeatedly is, an officer comes, they get a card, they don't hear from them, they don't know who to call. So I really think this is a great idea, so.
Thank you, sir.
Totally commend you and applaud you for doing it.
Thank you.
Okay, well, okay, you guys first.
Just, I'll be quick.
Well, Councilmember Baca, okay, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I just want to commend the team, the chief, for bringing this forward. I think to be able to just step up our customer service and the true transparency that we're going to be moving forward with is a great step forward. And I also look forward to seeing how our department's customer service changes as we get these positive feedbacks and the negative feedbacks that will come too. I look forward to that tool and using that to encourage and really coach our team out there and provide a service that is probably nowhere near in the area in terms of what we're doing here in Rialto. Thank you.
Sir.
Councilmember Baca?
Thank you. I, along with my colleagues, want to commend the department, Police Department, for being futuristic, thinking in terms of how we handle customer service, not only now, but in the future. And then changing the image is that we care about our community, and we want to provide the best service available and information that would be available to many of the individuals that would be contacting the police department. I think it's a positive move in the right direction. It's a positive move in using technology, and we got to continue to look at ways that we can continue to improve. This is one way that we began to take those steps, and hopefully that we, as a council, continue to support the police department as we move forward, as the city continues to grow, and as we continue to make our city a lot safer, because I believe that we are one of the safer cities around the Inland Empire, and we want to continue to have that image. But we also want to continue to have customer service where people feel that they can come to our police department and get the information that they want, and the Spider program is one way that they'll be able to do that. Thank you very much for implementing this program.
Sir.
Okay, and I would just like to say, I appreciate that, like you said in the beginning when your opening comments, you did hear, Chief, some of our concerns when we were going through the budget process. And I hope that this will not be the last of seeing some programs being put in place that will help our community, and I applaud you guys for, I think, I believe, being the first one to show us something that will be our customer service. I, though, have to ask a question. I mean, you know, I was sitting here thinking about the layout and everything, and I kind of got the sense it was, would be text messages. And I sat there thinking, well, I also have a landline, and sometimes people do have just a landline. And then I thought, well, how will that texting occur? I don't know if there's something else. And then I also said, well, if it's non-emergency, are we going to be trying to communicate assuming they might have an email? I don't know. But I just thought I'd ask that, because we kind of all go into, we're all into that world now. I mean, I just saw a little granddaughter, she told me, I have a phone. She's seven. I'm going, okay. Then earlier today, she accidentally FaceTimed me, and they go, oops. So, I'm thinking, but there's still people who have an actual line, and that's it. So, is there a pathway that you'll be, the team will be figuring out how they're going to roll out updates?
Yeah, so I'm glad you asked that question. So if they do call on a landline, our dispatchers are going to ask them for an email address, and then we'll be able to send messages through that. I know the technology is also trying to work on a way of doing callbacks, but they're not quite there yet, but there will be some email stuff.
Okay, and I thought about that, because I know you can, you know, you get this thing now. I can't get to you right now, but you want to leave me the number, I'll call you back in five minutes or something like that, so, yeah, please look at that, because I do have a landline, and I haven't quite figured out if SMS means it might one day come through a landline. Okay.
Can I just say one more?
Thank you guys.
Can I say one more thing?
Oh, sure.
Because Councilmember Carisales said important work team, and sometimes a lot of people are involved in these things, and they don't get the recognition they deserve.
Right, absolutely.
Our IT supervisor, Ricky Tankersley, our records supervisor, Jackie Morales, our lead dispatcher, Ayesha Little, and Sergeant Jonathan Palmer were very huge parts in getting this going, so I really wanted to recognize them. But thank you.
Applause to them all. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Okay, unless there's any other presentations that weren't listed here, that concludes our presentations, and we'll move over into oral communications, and I'll look to Madam City Clerk to let me know if there's any oral communications.
Yes, we have a speaker, Patrick Taylor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor.
I saw him sitting up there early, I don't know if he's outside.
I don't have his office here, so.
Okay.
You may get it. All right, sir, thank you. Captain, Captain's office.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. All right. And was that it for oral communications? Nobody else, okay? With that, now we'll just, we'll move on to looking at our agenda and determining if there's anything anyone needs to note that they want to abstain on, or any item in our consent calendar they'd like to pull for any discussions.
Yes, Madam Mayor, on D six, I will recuse myself out of abundance of caution with a paving that's coming near my home.
Okay, that's you.
D six.
D six.
And Mayor, if we could, we'd like to remove item tab four from the agenda tonight. We'll bring that back subsequently after we address some comments and make a few amendments to it.
Thank you. And we will note it, we will be moving tab six, you said?
Tab four.
Four, tab four. Okay. Something sticky. Anything else, anyone? If not, can I get a motion to pass on the consent calendar?
It's been moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Baca, seconded by Councilmember Trejo. Any objections? Hearing none. The consent calendar has been passed, and now we'll move on to tab one. Okay? And tab one will be handled by, okay, hello, good evening, Eme.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the council. This evening, I request that the city council conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed annexation of territory into the Rialto Landscape and Lighting District Number Two. The city conditioned several development projects to construct Parkway and/or medium landscaping and install city streetlights. Annexation into LMD two is a condition of the city's acceptance of any publicly maintained Before you hear, a couple of maps showing north of Foothill Boulevard, as well as south of Foothill Boulevard, with landscape annexations prior and upcoming today. The green show the ones that we're going to be talking about this evening. The staff currently recommends the following development projects to be annexed into LMD two. PPD 2020-0012, which is north of Valley Boulevard and west of Willow Avenue. PPD 2021-0004, south of West Renaissance Parkway and east of North Alder Avenue. PPD 2021-0043, north of Foothill Boulevard and east of Acacia Avenue. And PPD 2021-0063, which is north of Renaissance Parkway, south of Highland Avenue, and west of Locust Avenue. And I have maps that will depict each of these locations. This is PPD 2020-0012. PPD 2021-0004. And PPD 2021-0063. This is a protest ballot proceeding for the proposed levy of new assessments as described in your engineer's report included as attachment one. On September the 26th, the city council adopted resolution number 8149, setting a public hearing to consider the annexation into Rialto Landscape and Lighting District Number Two for this evening, October 24th, 2023. Subsequently, the city mailed public notices and official ballots to the property owners on record. At this time, I request that the city council conduct the public hearing and take public testimony regarding the proposed annexations and tabulate the ballots received. Adopt resolution number 8160, declaring the results of the property owner protest ballot proceedings. And adopt resolution number 8161, confirming the engineer's report regarding the annexation of properties into the Rialto Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number Two, and levy of annual assessments and order the levy and collection of assessments. This concludes my report, and representatives from Web Municipal Finance and I are available to answer any questions.
Okay, excuse me, this is a public hearing, and is there anyone who has indicated a desire to speak on this item? Madam City Clerk? No?
Move to close?
Then, move to close?
Second.
Closed by, moved by Councilmember Trejo and seconded by Mayor Protem Carizales to close the public hearing. Any objections?
Just a question.
Well, let's close the public hearing, then you can ask the question. Okay, any objections to closing the public hearing? Hearing none, it's closed. Councilmember Baca?
You indicated that we've got some response. What were the yeses and the noes? You didn't give us a...
I have to conduct the... The city clerk will read the ballots.
Yes, open them.
It's a procedure, he was doing the public hearing, and now if she's finished, then I will.
She opens the ballots, and you get the yeses and the noes.
Get the results.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what, that's, yeah, that's, have the public hearing. Now that it's closed, Madam City Clerk, no one has any other questions? Did you have a question, Rafael?
No, no, sorry.
Okay, so with that, Madam City Clerk, would you?
Yes, I will.
Open the ballots, please.
For PPD 2020-0012, this virtue, Center in Rialto. Ballot is in support.
Okay, on 2022.
I am open, PPD 2021-004, Renaissance Travel Center. It's also in support. Next ballot. Are also in support. And the last ballot, PPD 2021-0063, CRP loving Rialto Industrial Owners. Are also in support.
Okay, all right, so can we now get a motion?
Move for approval.
Right? Moved, okay, it's been moved by Mayor Protem Carizales, seconded by Councilmember Trejo. I know that you need to...
I would like for them to read the motion.
Yes.
The resolution that they made the motion to.
And I think, Councilmember Rock, did you have another question?
Yes, question. Yeah, in reference, I still haven't heard the numbers of yeses and noes, and how many people were actually surveyed in each of these areas that the letters went out? Do we know?
Well, I believe the letter only goes out to the property owner.
Well, how many?
We just, right here.
Those are it, the four.
It's four. One per development, for each parcel.
There's only four in each one?
Yeah, Councilmember, these aren't developed properties, so there's not people living on these properties right now.
These are the people that own them?
It's just the developer, and the developer votes one per parcel. And in this case, there were four parcels, each had one single vote, yes.
Thanks for the clarification.
Okay. Okay, so now, would you read the resolution?
Yes, so, resolution number 8160, and resolution number 8161. Thank you.
I don't think that is what...
I need to fill out title of each of the resolutions, where we can have it for the record. If you would like for me to read it, I will for you.
Would you, please?
Yes, the motion was made by Mayor Protem Carizales, and the second was by, what's the second?
Councilmember Trejo.
Councilmember Trejo, approving resolution 8160, declaring the results of the property owner protest ballot proceeding conducted for the levy assessment to the annexation territory for the landscape and lighting and maintenance for District Two. Also, resolution 8161 confirmed the engineer reporting for the annexation of territory for landscaping and lighting for District Two, and the assessment diagram connected and ordering the levied of collection to assessment commenced in the fiscal year 2324 for the annexation. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want a roll call vote?
No, I just...
Okay, any objections to that? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're on to tab two. Thank you. And that will be, good evening, Enoch.
Good evening.
We have purchase order, okay.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Protem, members of the council. The item before you is requesting to authorize a purchase order in the amount of $220,000 to Viola West Operating Services pursuant to their concession agreement with Rialto Utility Authority to relocate conflicting water hydrants for the Merrill Avenue Safe Frost School Improvements Project, city project number 220801. On February 28, 2023, the city council authorized a purchase order in the amount of $239,120 to Somos for the design of the Merrill Safe Frost School Improvements Project. Somos is approximately 90% completed with the project plans and specifications. Existing fire hydrants in the project area were found to be in conflict with the proposed walking paths for access ramps and sidewalks during design.
Move for approval, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and I'll second it.
I have some questions.
Okay, Councilmember Scott.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't really see in here where the project area is. Can you describe the project area for us?
Yes, so, project area is within the vicinity of Boyd Elementary School. Project segments are off of South Street, Huff Street, Carter, and it would be the installation of new curb ramps and sidewalks.
Okay, and can I ask, in the future, when you bring an item forward like this, that you include a map with it so that the council can see where this work is actually happening and taking place?
Yes, sir.
I think it's important for them to know that. Additionally, you're moving water, fire hydrants behind the new sidewalks, I assume.
Yeah, well, so, the objective is to move the hydrants where they are accessible, but also out of the walking, the proposed walking path, so...
Okay, and are there any telephone poles in that same pathway?
There are poles, but the sidewalks will be built around them.
Sidewalks will go around them.
Yes, and there'll be enough clearance.
Is there any project in the future to underground?
Not that I'm aware of at this moment. Not that I'm aware of at this moment.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure we're not putting hydrants or any new poles or anything in sidewalks that are going to obstruct pedestrians like we have and did on Randall Avenue.
Agreed, yeah, the objective of this project is to get ahead of, uh, the construction proposed by the Merrill Safe Frost School Project and to have accessibility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And just to, anyone else have a question?
I, I had similar concerns, I, I was hoping to have some images, I was trying to go on maps and I couldn't find, uh, the, the area that you were kind of mentioning. But, um, if you could also provide additional information on the necessity of it. If you could just send us additional information.
Will do, and, uh, when, when we come back to council for the authorization to advertise the construction project, we'll provide those images.
Okay, thank you.
You will be coming back for an authorization?
Authorization to, so this is the authorization to pers, to proceed with relocating the hydrants ahead of the Merrill Safe Frost School Project. Uh, once design is completed, we'll be coming back to council for authorization to advertise for construction bids.
Okay, uh, and just to follow up, and I, I think what Councilmember Scott said, um, yeah, I know it's hydrants, but we also have power poles out there and I've seen a lot of electrical work going on, and, uh, if there's an area where there is a power pole, let's find out if they have a schedule of work planned to underline or underground it, and so we won't end up putting in the sidewalk, doing all that, and then still having to deal with a power pole if we could, pave all the way to, to the curb, so I don't know, but like you said, you don't know, and so I see that we have it here, it's going to be, the workers recommend issuing a purchase order to Violia to do the work or oversee it, so perhaps some way we collaborate with Edison and see if they have any plans wherever there might be a pole, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
The second by you, right?
Yes, and the second might be, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries, tab three, thank you. Tab three, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council.
Good evening.
Item before you is to make changes to our current agreement with Conica Minolta. These changes involve initiating a five-year lease agreement to replace our aging copier fleet with, uh, new high-speed, energy-efficient models. Additionally, the updated contract includes a set rate for maintenance and supplies, which protects us from higher costs during peak seasons. We request the City Council to approve the amended lease and maintenance agreement outlined in the updated professional service agreement with Conica Minolta in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and forty dollars distributed over five years and to authorize the city manager or his designee to execute all documents, and I'm here with Conica Minolta if you have any questions.
Thank you, uh, I don't know if there's any questions, I know, I checked the math and it says thirty-four hundred dollars, it's two, two hundred and four thousand. And I do believe, uh, we have, uh, maintenance, that's a maintenance service contract with it, so any objections or any note? Now move the item, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, uh, any objections to the motion? Hearing none, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, that concludes our business and I think, uh, if we have, uh, our Mrs. Alvarado, if she'd like to share with us, uh, what's, what's going on, what's coming up, what's happening? And, uh, looks like she's ready for all of, I love the jacket.
Thank you, it glows in the dark. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of the council, here's what's going on in Rialto. On Thursday of this week, uh, the Senior Center will be having their Halloween dance at the Grace Vargas Senior Center. On Tuesday, October thirty first, we will be hosting our annual Halloween hijinks here at, uh, Rialto Civic Center from five thirty to nine thirty PM. We would like for you guys to save the date for Rialto Heritage Days, which will be held on Saturday, November eighteenth at the Civic Center. Uh, save the date for Rialto's Holiday Festival and Parade, which will be Saturday, December second, here at Civic Center. And then, of course, uh, save the date for, uh, Run Around the Rocks, Sunday, December third.
Okay, sounds like, activities, thank you. Yes, uh, Chief Parks? Oh, well, okay, sorry, uh, Councilmember Baca has a question for you, Ms. Alvarado.
Could you possibly give us the, the time of these events, uh, because, you know, you, you said there's a senior holiday, uh, Halloween dance, but it doesn't say what time? And, you know, some of us may want to go.
Yes, absolutely, I will, um, get Ms. Angie those times so that she can send them to you.
For each of the items that are listed on there, just the.
All right, thank you. Very nice, good.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd just be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, earlier we heard Captain, or, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Nelson talk about teamwork and, you know, getting their IT, uh, module up and running. I just want to thank Ms. Alvarado, Cynthia and her team for helping with the girls' fire camp, the heavy lift they did in the planning, the, you know, taking all the, uh, intake and the, you know, communication with the applicants.
Okay.
It was the lion's share of a lot of the work on the, on the planning and, and everything happened before and during the events, I just want to say thank you to Cynthia and her team, be remiss to not mention that, so.
All right, well, thank you, okay, thank you. All right, reports, guys, anybody have anything they want to report? Okay, anybody have something, Rafael?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor, there was a couple other elected officials that showed up to the, uh, well, workshop that I was put together in the Seven Hundred Year Valley Municipal Water District, it was well attended, we had some great speakers, um, and, uh, we got some really good feedback from, from a lot of the attendees.
Uh, Councilmember Baca?
Yes, I'd, uh, like to thank, uh, Remrod Seniors for having appreciation, uh, for our firefighters and our Police Department, uh, a breakfast that they held on Saturday, so I really appreciate them hosting and I appreciate the Police Department, the Fire Department going out there because they appreciate the safety of our community that they've provided both from fire and from the Police Department, so. It was a great event that was attended, uh, that morning at Remrod Senior Center.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Scott? Okay, he's passed, and, well, I just will close in saying that, um, I would like to, uh, thank you and also acknowledge the job well done, Councilmember Tre Hill. I heard that the, uh, water workshop that you put together under Well, uh, was part of your fellowship and it was definitely well done. And I spoke with, uh, Victor Grego, who is the founder of, uh, of the, well, founder of the Water Wells, I mean, Wells Organization as well as he is, uh, in charge of, uh, I met him through the Rural Water Association, uh, great presentations, I was sharing with Councilmember Scott and I would ask, uh, that, uh, perhaps Thomas Crowley or Toyasha would be so kind as to reach out to West Valley Water District and if we could get a copy of their slide presentation, because I was saying, I hope you remember when they showed that what they are proposing to do about bringing the treated water and they were going to be putting it into the Cactus Basin, I didn't want to ask. So I want to make sure I saw that correctly, uh, so we'd like to, you know, it was a public presentation, so I'd like to go back and get a copy of that, but it was well done. It was a very nice well done, and I also want to just thank, uh, the last, uh, two days of, of last week, I was in Washington DC quickly for the US Conference of Mayors Water Council, where we had the opportunity for two days to hear from US EPA, uh, US DOE and also, uh, the Department of Treasury. I won't bore everybody with, uh, all the material that was provided to us, but it was a lot of material and I, I'm hoping that we'll be able to dissect it and share, uh, with everyone, but one of the things is DOE just laid out a whole lot of new programs that are designed to assist municipalities and also offering services of their technical assistance unit, which I'm hoping that we will take advantage of for grant writing. So, with that, uh, don't want to be long-deprived, I will entertain, uh, German.
So moved? Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Tre Hill and seconded by Mayor Protem Carazalas, no objections? That's it, it's a wrap, bye.